Thank you.
Please be seated. Allison, if you could please call a roll, please.
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Vice Mayor Pontieri, President. Councilmember Gombaro.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
And Councilmember Stevens is absent.
Thank you, ma'am. The first item on the agenda we're gonna go to is D, is an award for the great places to live, uh, great places in Florida Award. And I will come down to accept the award.
So first, we have a very short video to show you.
Good morning. My name is Alara Mills-Gutcher, and I'm President of the Florida Chapter of the American Planning Association. And this award is offered to you, the City of Palm Coast, for your waterfront park. This was a competitive People's Choice Award, and it was elected statewide by residents within the state of Florida. What a great accomplishment for you all to recognize this. This is a beautiful 20-acre ADA accessible park. You should be so proud of your accomplishments and the work that your staff put in to submit for the award. We are acknowledging this now because, as you know, back in the fall, we had a series of hurricanes that delayed this presentation. So with me today, I'd like to recognize Kathy Eball. She is a Vice President, one of the Vice Presidents of Florida APA, to say a few words also.
Good morning, Council. As is planners, we have a longstanding relationship with Palm Coast, so we are, Alara and I are so excited, not just because it's Palm Coast, but because of the relationship that we have working with you and with your community. We recognize and understand the relationship that you bring to your community and how well you listen to your community and how everything you do, whether it's with parks planning or master planning or land development codes, that everything you do is about your citizens and about your community members and listening to them and what their needs are. And this park and the way it's been designed and the way it's developed and the way it's used is just evidence of that relationship that you have with your community. And so that for APA Florida is, is excited to be able to recognize you for your great work and the, and the continued work that you have in building relationships with your community to make Palm Coast a place that really reflects the community and is for your community.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Brittany McDermott, the Deputy Director of Parks and Recreation. We appreciate you recognizing this achievement, and thank you to APA Florida for putting on this wonderful program. We're honored that Waterfront Park has won this award. Definitely have to acknowledge that a large part of the process while we had to apply and get nominated was public engagement. We would not have won without the community voting for Waterfront Park and showing their love and support. So huge shout out to our community. Also want to acknowledge our Parks Maintenance Team who keeps the park in pristine condition. They are very hardworking. Huge shout out to them. And want to thank our partners such as the Florida Inland Navigation District. Commissioner Randy Stapelford is here. Thank you for being here. It's because of you and your team and the numerous grants and initiatives that you have, you know, provided to Waterfront Park that have really shaped it into what it is today. And then just a quick save the date, Saturday, April 26th is Celebrate Trails Day. It's the second annual celebration. We will be hosting one or two food trucks, some vendors, lots of great information just to celebrate our Parks and Trails. And Commissioner Stapelford, did you want to say anything?
Never give up a chance. Well, thank you. Thank you for the award. It's very special. And this is a very special waterfront park, and I think it's appreciated all throughout the 12 coastlines of the Florida Inland Navigational District. It's beautiful. I've enjoyed giving every penny and dollar through the taxpayers' money to make this even a bigger and better park. And we have some game plans ahead that are gonna make it even better than it has been. So I'm glad to be here. I'm glad to be part of this award ceremony, and I look forward to having greater awards come in the future for it. And thank you for being here.
We need one group picture in front of the seals.
Close it in, team. One, two, three. Thank you, everybody.
Mayor, City Council, just want to echo those warm remarks about Waterfront Park, but also highlight the fact that many of the improvements that have done, that have been done at Waterfront Park have been done with either recreational impact fees or grants from the Florida Inland Navigation District. So we did not use any property taxes for the completion of those projects. So let's, also good kudos to staff as well.
Yeah, I, um, City Manager, if I may, I, I just want to echo that. I'm so proud of our staff, Parks and Rec, and also just immense thank you to Mr., to Commissioner Stapelford. I know you've been tireless in your efforts to continue to get us grants for a lot of things in the community, but specifically for Waterfront Park. So thank you. And, and thank you again to staff and City Manager for all your efforts.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, thank you, City Manager, Vice Mayor. We'll go, we'll move now into public participation. Just, uh, please read, read the rules and no defamatory or, or raucous activities up at the, at the podium. With that being said, anyone that has a public comment of items that are not currently on the agenda, if it's an agenda item, you'll have time to speak on that agenda item later. So yes, ma'am?
Hello, everyone. I'm Anna Gibson. I live in the P section. I probably make a public comment every week now. So I just wanted to comment on the utility rate and the utility workshop that happened last week. Two items. First of all, I brought up last week that during Wateropolis, it was brought to my attention that the City of Nashville was able to lower their utility rate. Actually, just want to give a shout out to Teresa. She's the only one that called me back whenever I called people regarding the utility rate increase. First of all, I spoke with her about finding the case study from Nashville where they were able to lower the utility rate. Interestingly enough, I didn't find the one related to Nashville, but I did find one related to St. John's County, our neighbor. So they were actually able to lower their utility rate in 2023 when they were experiencing substantial growth by 3%. They put a little chart here that shows all the utility bills. You could see the City of Palm Coast is right down here. Well, I'll give this to you so you can see it. So we are the third highest utility bill rate right now. I wanted to bring to your attention the way that they did it. So first, they did it because instead of building new facilities, they purchased new facilities. So that's something I don't know if our utility, uh, our current utility system looked into purchasing new, purchasing utilities instead of building utility, um, facilities. The second thing they did is actually in 2001, they implemented reuse regulations. So all new development irrigation systems needed to use reclaimed water. So I've actually printed off these codes for you and highlighted the areas where they've implemented strong conservation rules associated with development. The next thing I wanted to bring up is the difference in connection fees. This is incredibly substantial. So first of all, I think that we need to clarify what a connection fee is. A connection fee via the House Bill of Florida is not an impact fee. So we have every action fees so that the appropriate cost gets charged to a new development or a new homeowner seeking to build. This is also in connection with our city ordinances. So it says in our city ordinances, you call them water capacity fees, but these water capacity fees shall be charged to the total city costs, which we're not doing right now. So I've pulled the, the numbers from what was presented by the utility department. Currently, for every new home, we are losing about $4,000, which is being absorbed, absorbed by the costs of the utility department. I took the Palm Coast Developmental Orders of 2023. That's a net loss of $16 million we are currently absorbing just for that year alone. I'll go ahead and give this.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Kathy Davidson, Palm Coast, Florida Airbnb. We weren't here just last time because we were away on a cruise for our 40th anniversary. What we did for ourselves with our Airbnb is we hired somebody to come stay in our home to oversee. This is a woman that was an Airbnb guest of ours from many years ago. She loved what we were doing and said, Kathy, if you ever go out of town, please call me. I'll come from South Carolina to stay in your home and to oversee it, to make sure everything is go well. She's been doing that for eight years now. So we have been very responsible. That is the difference between the model that we have, whereas Airbnb started where people live in their home, rent out their rooms. And we have been very responsible compared to the other model, which is you buy a house and you don't live in it, and you have nobody to contact where there's an issue. Because we have somebody in our home overseeing, no one complains in our neighborhood. No one has issues. No one has issues in our home because somebody is physically there to oversee. I would like to encourage you, if you would do it, I know you have your law you just created that is going to dock us. You know, in life, we've always been taught if you do good, you should be promoted, and if you don't do good, you should not. We've been doing good, and we're being demoted by being told we can only have so many people in our homes. I doubt you're gonna tell everybody in, in Palm Coast, you can only have 10 people at your parties, 10 people, and tell grandma, you're the 11th person, you cannot show up. You can't come because you've now docked it. We have been responsible. The other people who are causing issues, we're being told that we have to have this, pay the same penalty as them, and that is wrong. I encourage you to please make an amendment for the 34 or 35 of us homes in the area that actually live in our homes and do Airbnb responsibly, to make it so that way we can do it the way we have been successful at for 10 years now. And we've had no complaints, no issues. Ask you to make that amendment and to reconsider that thought for us. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Joel Davison, Palm Coast, also with Airbnb. And there are only 34 homes that are in this category. 28 of those homes where, like Kathy and I, they live in the home and monitor the home. Only 28. There are another six homes where the owners live right near the home, like our daughter Jennifer, and take good care of their homes. So you're looking at either 28 or possibly 34 homes that fit this category. There's a beautiful article in Carewell. They researched hundreds of towns in America to find the best town for senior citizens to visit. And guess what? Palm Coast is number one for senior citizens to visit. The best hidden gem destinations for seniors are Palm Coast, Florida, number one. One of the reasons for that, one is the size of the local senior population, which is 31%, as was pointed out recently. We're not just a retirement community, but 31%. And the second reason is the average daily vacation rentals from Airbnb. If you go to Carewell and just search for Palm Coast, number one destination for seniors to go on vacation, I can say that in our home, over 50% of our guests are senior citizens. These are harmless, harmless people. The list that, well, we, we did send to everybody, because we spent a lot of time researching, trying to find who lives in their homes and rents through Airbnb. Now, the list that I sent to you has the 28 people that live in their homes, and then also the other six that we couldn't completely isolate, but might not live in their homes. And of those people, for example, Morris and Deborah, Morris came here a few weeks ago. They're retired. They need that income, and it takes a lot of their income away if they have to limit to two people per bedroom. And again, the point is, is that our business is different. It's not a traditional short-term rental where the house is vacant and the house and neighborhood is, uh, subject to whatever those people want to do. Where, all of the people function like us, the 28 folks that live in their homes and even the six that don't but live close to their homes, where they all function the same, where we take good care of our homes. Our home, for example, we're not the best at keeping the outside of our home perfect, but we were able to put a fence around our home so our trash cans can't be seen from the road. If we hadn't done Airbnb, we would not have been able to do that. And, you know, they, it might not have looked as good as it does. So I'm out of time, so we'll stop there, but thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Brian Putcup, excuse me. My concern is that the Palm Coast Land Development Code specifically lists out a number of streets that require special treatment, one of which is the Seminole Woods Corridor. It is listed as a specially designated road and as such has specific requirements for landscape buffers that are required by our city code. If you look on Seminole Woods, you will see multiple developments that are in clear violation of our own city code. Now, I understand there's an administrator who has the option to interpret the code, but completely removing the requirement for landscape buffers is no longer interpretation. He has, these have overstepped their bounds, and these things have been improved, approved outside of the scope of what they're allowed to do. We must follow our own code. We cannot allow the developers to have a different set of rules than the individual residents have to follow. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Mark Webb, Palm Coast. A couple cleanup items from the last workshop you had. I have yet to be able to find those incredible presentations that were put out for the sole use of the city residents. You guys had already seen those two presentations. Two of the council members weren't even here, and I have gotten an abundance of questions from residents that couldn't interpret the YouTube video and haven't been able to find the documents. So I have some suggestions. One, I can find archive agendas of all the meetings. You should attach a presentations that were presented there so the public can pull them up and read them at their leisure and interpret it. That would provide a great link between all the efforts that we're doing to put these presentations together. And we all would agree that probably for 2025, this water challenge that we have in front of us will probably be the single largest effort this city's gonna face and has faced for decades now. I would also ask and suggest that there be hard copies printed out and made available on workshop meetings at the front door so that those of us that come in here can grab it and follow along, make notes, and use this data that was presented for our needs. I believe this is probably an action of the Sunshine Law that would expect that you be transparent and present to the city the things that are going on. And in that case, the both presentations, the need for the money and then how we're gonna get it has yet to be found. I've spent a lot of time trying to find it on our website and hadn't been able to do so. But I did find it. It was linked to a Flagler Live article that Pierre put out at the very bottom of his effort. So I think we could do a little better to inform the city and make that data available. And finally, I am a strong supporter of Vice Mayor's suggestions of taking this action in the future, one small bite at a time, because we believe that the administrations above us and the attitudes will change. Money will become available again, federal money and those kind of things. So with that, thank you, and hopefully we can get better data out there for the city residents.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Carr.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. Just want to say thank you for the traffic common plan that's out, and it is making a difference in our neighborhood, big difference. Also, I wanted to, I hope that y'all can find a different way to handle the, the utilities increases because a lot of people during COVID spent a lot of their savings. Some of them lost all of their savings just to survive COVID. And every time there's an increase, it's making it more and more difficult for them to regain their financial stability with, uh, being able to save. I would just hope you can find it in a different way. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir, Mr. Davis.
Good morning, Jerem Davis, P Section. I'm still looking for accountability. There's been zero for the case. I'm still dealing with a house that's four feet higher than me. Rainy season is upon us. None of y'all are worried about flooding? I am. None of y'all. It, it's... When I look through my records, me and her, or damn, Kaylee's not even here, but Ms. Cook have, have had many emails. And in those emails, I've asked for certain things. Previously, she was not able to provide me with those certain things. Magically, those certain things appear now. I find that very interesting. Teresa, you already know about that because I sent you the email. I find this interesting, that y'all are able to provide documents that you weren't able to provide before, because people are covering their own ass. That's a problem. They didn't have this shit before. Now all of a sudden, they can make this stuff up just because I'm asking for it to prove my case because all y'all in the back know y'all are wrong. Every single person that's been in the 62 Parady Lane knows for their own damn well, looking at that, that that's a wrong, that's a problem. Y'all have added more homes on my road and the road around me, but yet that damn culvert pipe that goes to the canal is still too small. Make that shit make sense. The water's gotta go somewhere.
Mr. Davis, let me pause.
I'm not threatening anybody with my language.
Pause it for, pause this time, Allison. You will not use that tone in here. If you can't be civil, you're, you're more likely to leave.
I am being civil. You have to follow decorum, not me.
Start it time again, Allison.
It's my freedom of speech. So I'm not threatening anybody with my language. It's not hurting anybody's feelings. You and I both know that. Every single one of you know that.
There's a difference between being civil and just being rude.
I am being civil. You know I have raw emotions because this is my home. You know that because you campaigned in front of my home. You know that. I'm sitting here shaking because I'm so fucking emotionally.
That's it. That's it. Time's done.
Exactly.
Have a good day, sir. Just for the record, just so everyone know, that Mr. Per, um, Mr. Davis' house had flooding issues back in 2012. Anyone else for, um, comment, please?
This is recent, so don't even say that shit.
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Council. I'm Paulette Hatfield from the F Section. Back in 1992, when my dad and I bought a house in the F Section on the canal, we chose not to use the well that is, came with the ITT house. We have not irrigated our water, our, our lawn since that time. And St. Augustine grass, if you train it, um, it will not, um, need rain that much. It will not need water to be watered every day or every other day. It will grow longer roots and become, um, more, um, consistent with having to conserve water. And we believe that that's kind of important. My neighbors on our cul-de-sac, we don't water our lawns, even though we all have wells. We use, um, um, natural Florida plantings. We have things that growing, plants that are growing and, and flowers that are growing that don't need that much water. So I would like to suggest that the city provides some information about, um, using a way to conserve the water so that we're not being charged for lots of water usage, and we will have more for us to be able to drink. The other thing is, I want to thank you again for placing the calming, um...
Devices.
Whatever they are.
Yes, ma'am.
The, the speed humps on Florida Park Drive, the traffic is not so bad. They aren't speeding. I did catch myself going 35 miles an hour, however, between the Foster and the Flintstone area because it's a long stretch. So I really would like to suggest that you place another hump at Flintstone because everybody seems to be trying to catch up the speed that they're losing by stopping at 10 miles an hour to cross over the speed hump. The other thing is, is I just, again, want to remind you that you work for us, and we appreciate all that you do. I know it's a tough nut to crack sometimes, but I do appreciate, and I know that we will in the future do what we can to help keep our city pristine and happy and clean. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir, Mr. Fuller.
Good morning, Ed Fuller, Honorable Mayor Norris, Honorable Vice Mayor Teresa Carli-Pontieri, Honorable Mayor, Honorable City Councilman Ty Miller, Honorable City Councilman Cambaro, and Honorable Ray Stevens. Our thoughts and prayers with you. I want to share with you today a most excellent, uh, event I had. I'm doing construction of the house, and I am not a contractor by trade, never, never pretend to be. So I went to the permitting, uh, unit, and I must say I was pretty much scared to death. I've never, never asked for a permit, never wanted a permit. And I'll tell you what, I met a gentleman by the name of Scott Thomas. Scott is just an amazing employee. I didn't have a clue what I was doing, but I know had, I had to repair our concrete slab. And I took some really great pictures. They're photo-worthy, not really. And I told him, showed him the damage, and he said, well, Ed, what are you gonna do? I said, well, I'm either gonna put concrete in there or pavers. And he said, well, it makes a difference, you know, what you're gonna do. But he says, do you have a picture of the damage? I said, sure. He said, better yet, let me get a plat for you. So he provides a overview of our, of our property and says, is, can you show me where it's at? And I said, I certainly can. And he says, so you can show me where the area is? I said, yeah. He said, well, just fill in this blank right here, and that's all you need to do. Tell me what size of the pavers or concrete you're going to use. If you use concrete, it's gonna cost you X. If it's gonna use pavers, it's gonna cost you Y. And also, if you're gonna go with pavers, you need to sign a paver restraint form. And just so you know, it all, it needs to be all notarized. We're all notaries here. Let me tell you something. That blew me awry. I felt like I could, like I could built a skyscraper after that. I really was educated by Mr. Thomas. He took his time. He didn't laugh at me, and I told him that he certainly could because all the questions I asked him were just absolutely out of this world because I know nothing about construction. He made me feel valued customer. And I must say, Mr. Thomas, you are, you are a tribute to that building department over there. You made Clark Rizwald well assured that I can get a permit and be, and so that Barbara Grossman won't come after me for any violations of building. But I must say, Mr. Thomas, you really did a great job. City Council, thank you very much for, for all you do, and thank you for your leadership. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller. Anyone else? Public comment, anyone? Yes, ma'am.
Good morning. I'm Darlene Shelly, K Section, Palm Coast. I just wanted to say thank you to the city and Parks and Recreation for Waterfront Park as one of the residents who voted for that park. As one of the residents who voted for that park, just wanted to give our gratitude. My family and I go to the Children's Memorial Park often. We love looking at the rowers on the intracoastal and the beautiful boats that go by as we go to visit our first granddaughter, Gracie Aloha, who we lost full term at nine months. It's a beautiful place to go and remember Gracie with the family. I think it's a wonderful thing the city has put in place. You know, a lot of my friends and neighbors go, and they'll say hello to Gracie and remember her, and she has a stone at the Children's Memorial. And I just wanted to say thank you for all the hard work that, you know, the city and Parks and Recreation, city employees did, to make that park so special and a way for residents to remember loved ones that they've lost. So just thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else for a public comment? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the dais. Anyone have any comments on, on the statements that were made, city managers, vice mayor?
Sure, I can answer some of those. Ms. Gibson, just to answer your question, we do have reuse regulations in our land development code, and it does apply, for instance, grand landings, they have reclaimed water to their development. It would just be too costly for us to try and put it in the ITT vacant lots or any of the ITT lots, but all new subdivisions, we do go through that process. As far as St. John's County and purchasing new facilities, unfortunately, we are the largest city, or we are the largest utility in the county, and there's not a lot of facilities for us to acquire, and if we do, they have their own problems and their own consent orders and decrees, and we don't want to inherit any more problems. So, and then, as it relates to the connection fees, that would be a great question for our consultant, but we have worked with him on maximizing all of the available resources so that we can get as much money coming in to, for the system. The gentleman who had discussions about the buffer on Seminole Woods, I'm sorry, I didn't catch your last name, sir, but I would just ask that you speak to Mr. Tyner in the back about the land development code and understanding the map. Mr. Tyner's gone over it with me, and I've talked to Ms. Pontieri about that map, but Mr. Tyner is standing up in the back if you'd like to speak with him in regards to the buffers. Mr. Webb, thank you for your comments on the utility rate and presentations. Ms. Kershaw is making that available by the end of the week. We just need to make sure that our presentations are ADA compliant, so that takes us a little bit longer, and I don't think Flagler Live has to do the same requirements that we do as the government. And thank you, Ms. Hatfield. We will provide some additional information on water conservation. There is, I believe April is Water Conservation Month, and we've typically won a few regional challenges promoting that campaign. Thank you, Mr. Fuller. We'll be share to, be sure to share your kudos for Mr. Thomas for delivering excellent customer service. And thank you, Ms. Shelley. We also enjoy Waterfront Park. So I think I've tried to accomplish a lot of those, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Vice Mayor, do you have something?
Just really quickly, Deputy City Clerk, if I could get a schedule of the requests made by Mr. Davis and our responses, so the timeline of when his requests were made, the documents requested, and what our specific responses were, and then, I just want to make sure that we receive a copy of the documents Ms. Gibson handed us. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other council? Yes, Councilman?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Gibson, love to connect with you when we have an opportunity. I was out of the country traveling last week, so I look forward to following up and looking at all the documents you presented. And I too love Waterfront Park. It's the home of my, of our weekly cigar club, the Council Money Cristo, so it's an absolutely beautiful place, and I'm very thankful that we have that within our city. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Miller, anything?
One thing about the presentations, as far as printing for workshops, that's a bit costly. That's costly to do that, as people come in the door. We never know how many people are here, and I do agree that sometimes the city, the city website is a little bit hard to drill down to what you need, and hopefully, with the improvements we're doing for ADA compliant, it'll make it a little bit more accessible for people. And with that, I thank you.
So we're gonna move on to item G, appointments, and we're appointing two new members to the code enforcement.
Mr. Mayor, the item F, the previous minutes.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Allison. Can I get a motion to approve the previous minutes?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call vote, or just, we all agree? We all agree? Consent? All right, thank you. Unanimous consent? Yes, aye.
Aye.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm skipping ahead. Okay, we'll move on to item G, appointment of two, two new members to the code enforcement board. And Mr. Duffy, are we just gonna do it as far as nominations, if anyone from the dais wants to nominate someone?
Yeah, it just needs someone to, almost like make a motion that they want to nominate.
Mr. Mayor, I want to go ahead and jump right in.
What, City Manager, do you want to read out the, give us the names of the people that are up for consideration?
I can.
Please?
Sure. Okay, we received seven applicants from, and I'll go down the list, Mr. Mark Burton, Mr. Robert Calabrese, Mr. Glenn Davis, Mr. Joshua Farbien, Ms. Paula Hatfield, Mr. Ben Russell, and Ms. Donna Stansel.
I have a question. In the, in the past, we've done it via, like a ballot. Are we not doing that anymore?
No, it's better that we have a voice vote, and we're not having additional documentation, so it's been recommended to us to have it as a voice vote as proper process to move forward.
Why?
Just better practice, Ms. Pontieri. Well, there is no, there's no rules in particular of this, because it's, you're appointing someone to council for code enforcement, but I would just say it's best practice to go that route. Now, if City Council does not want to go that route, you know, it's up to you, but that, that would just be my recommendation.
Well, I ask because, A, I would like to hear from the applicants before we start nominating people, because in the past, we've allowed the applicants to come up to the podium, introduce themselves, explain, answer any questions we have, and then, we do, previously, we would have a ballot where we, you know, suggest people that way. This is a volunteer position, so I, I want to be sensitive to those people who have put themselves out there in this way, and I guess, in the nicest way possible, I don't want to poo-poo on anybody applying, so I, I just want to be sensitive towards that. My other question, though, is, in our policies and procedures, is there anything that delineates this specific process?
No, 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 no. But yeah, like, like you said, if that is the council's wishes, you're to have them...
I just don't know why the change. We didn't discuss the change, so it just, it's a little abrupt, that's all.
And Ms. Pontieri, we apologize for that. We've just, we've done it a couple of different ways. I think whenever we were appointing, appointing BEAC, it wasn't done with the ballot, so we look forward to the direction from City Council on how you would like to define this process.
So, are all the applicants here? I don't think so. Not all of them. We have one, two, four of the seven.
That they didn't know they should be here.
Yeah, well, we could, could we possibly table this and bring it back for a future?
Were the applicants told to come and that they would be given an opportunity to speak?
I believe so. I believe Kaylee communicated with them for the past two weeks, actually, saying that you are invited to council, you may be asked questions, you know?
Well, if they were given a heads up, I don't see any reason why, if they're not here, that's their choice to not be here, but the applicants who are here, they should get an opportunity.
Okay, so we, we have a, do we have consensus to let each one of the available applicants come forward for a three-minute dissertation, I guess?
Yeah, I think so. I think that's fair.
Let's do it, okay. Who's first in the queue? What's the, the list? City Manager, how does it run?
Mr. Mark Burton would be first.
Is Mr. Mark, okay. We're getting through this, this is a new council, we're gonna figure it out. Yes, sir, you have three minutes.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council members. Thank you for giving me a chance to chat with you for a little bit. I, as you see from my application, feel that I'm uniquely qualified for the code enforcement position, as I am a retired licensed architect of the state of Florida. I just recently moved here to Palm Coast, and I have been getting myself as uniquely involved as I can, gonna be trying to get onto the Citizens Academy so I can get very heavily involved in as much as I can with the city government. And I feel with my experience, having been a, when I was living in South Florida, I was a member of the Landscape Review Board, and I was also chairman for the Boynton Beach Downtown Review Board. So with those experiences in the past, I feel code enforcement would fit me in my value. With that being said, I'm gonna let the rest of the time go for the other people, because I'm sure you guys are pretty busy today. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next person?
Next is Mr. Robert Calabrese.
Robert, are you here? How you doing, sir?
Good morning. My name is Robert Calabrese. I've been a resident of Palm Coast since 2004. I've seen this city grow, in good times and bad. I watched my neighborhood turn into a lovely place to live, and then turn into a bankrupt, absentee, bank-owned area, and then come back. My background is in law enforcement. I've served in a, in a capacity in my community since I've been 17 years old. I was in the National Guard of Reserves for 29 years. I achieved the rank of Command Sergeant Major and retired as a Sergeant Major. I've been an advisor to police commissioners, as I was a 26-year veteran, as a lieutenant of Buffalo Police Department, and 10 years of that was in the Internal Affairs Division, where I was a supervising investigator, where I investigated, oversaw complaints against law enforcement, and made suggestions and recommendations to the police commissioner, and even so far as the mayor of the city of Buffalo. And I feel that I want to serve this city. I also, as, I do some consulting work for the sheriff's offices, I do their background investigations. So I'm somewhat involved in the county in that, that area. But I feel there's a need to serve. I served my church in Santa Maria del Mar. I was the faithful navigator of Assembly 2810. I was one of the groundswell people to bring the baby box to our fire station, and I also served in the, as, as the coordinator for their Veterans Memorial and their, some of their charitable activities. But with that being said, I think I'm uniquely qualified as an advisory capacity to interpret laws, rules, regulations, and ordinances, with the idea of not just punitive damages, but to making our community better, to solve the issues that some of these landlords and some of these homeowners have. I don't want to see us turn into a Deltona, and I say that with all due respects to Deltona. So thank you for your time, and I appreciate the honor of being accepted for this position.
Thank you, Sergeant Major. Next in the queue?
Mr. Glenn Davis.
Mr. Glenn Davis, are you here? He is not here.
Mr. Joshua Fabian.
Joshua's not here, I knew him. He's not here. Next?
Ms. Paulette Hatfield.
Ms. Paulette, come on up.
Good morning, Council, once again. I just wanted to mention that I've been a lifetime volunteer for my church, for the Houston Zoo for 25 years. For my church, I published a cookbook that had never been done before. And I also am one of the 10 original members of the Citizens Academy Ambassador, Alumni Ambassadors, that provide Palm Coast Connect with the opportunity to have an exposition that welcomes newcomers, so that everyone can learn more about Palm Coast. I'm not a politician, I have no political ambitions. I'm here in Palm Coast since my dad and I purchased our home in 1992, so I have lived with many different rules and tried to follow them as best as I can. I, I do appreciate you taking the time to let us speak, because we all have a, a job to do, and that is to try to keep our city clean and safe. And I feel that being appointed to the code enforcement board would allow me to try to make that more possible, because I'm a negotiator. I work very hard to try to find ways to make a solution to a problem, rather than being part of the problem. And I do thank you for your time. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Paulette. Next in the queue?
We have Mr. Ben Russell, or Russell?
Mr. Russell, is he here? He's not here, next?
And last, we have Ms. Donna Stansel.
Yes, ma'am, Ms. Stansel.
Good morning, everyone. I have volunteered to be on this code enforcement board, because I feel like I can add a lot to it. My husband was on it previously, and when he was put on the Planning-Zoning Commission, he had to resign from this position, and I immediately applied for his. I'm already on the Residential Drainage Committee, I'm the chairman of that committee, and that's been going on for a number of months now. We both are very active in the, in the, coming into the council meetings all the time, and in addition to that, outside of this venue sort of thing, my husband and I, when we moved here, we organized a group called Seniors Getting Together, and we have over 200 people on our mailing list right now, who have at one point in time joined our group, and, you know, people come and go, but we regularly have an attendance of over 30 people joining our luncheons, and we take them on excursion. So I'm active in the city, I'm trying to do whatever I can to be a good volunteer for the city, and I'd appreciate your vote.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thanks.
That was the last one. Bring it back to the dais. Could I get, any, do you have any nominations?
Mr. Mayor, you know, before I, I jump into this nomination, well, I'm just gonna do it, I, I hereby nominate Mr. Robert Calabrese to serve on this board for a couple reasons. One, and I think, Mr. Mayor and, and Councilman Miller, you guys would agree that the NCOs are the enforcers of standards within our US military, and the fact that Mr. Calabrese reached the rank of Command Sergeant Major says a lot. You don't, you don't breach that rank in our non-commissioned officer corps without enforcing standards. And two, he retired as a lieutenant in the Buffalo Police Department, and to me, you're enforcing laws, and, and he had obviously the leadership and, and the track record to, to, to reach the rank of lieutenant, much like our fellow council member, Ray Stevens. So, so with that, I'd like to formally, I move to, to appoint Mr. Calabrese, Mr. Calabrese to the code enforcement board.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second?
I'll second that. I'd like to add that I agree, I think he's shown a track record of lifetime service to both the communities that he's lived in, as well as our country.
Thank you, sir. Any other discussion? Vice Mayor, anything?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. So we have a, we have a, a motion and a second. Call the vote.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gobara?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
And Councilmember, I'm sorry, and Mayor Norris?
Yes, thank you, ma'am. Do I have a motion to appoint a second, the second seat?
I'd like to go ahead and motion, motion to appoint Ms. Hatfield. I think she's been an outstanding advocate for a relationship with the city in terms of Citizens Academy, as well as, you know, multiple other things, the Palm Coast Connect as well. So I think it shows that she cares and wants to participate within this community in a helpful way, in bridging the gap between our residents and our local government.
Thank you, sir. Do I have a second for Ms. Hatfield? Second?
I'll second.
Councilman Gambero has seconded. Any further discussion? Allison, could you please call the vote?
Certainly. Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gobara?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
And Mayor Norris? And Mayor Norris?
Yes. Thank everyone, I'd like to thank everyone that put their name in for consideration. Congratulations, Sergeant Major. Congratulations, Ms. Hatfield. I hope you do a wonderful job, and don't be so active on social media. You're a politician now. Just kidding. Okay, with that being said, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda.
I just, I just wanted to thank everybody else. Obviously, you know, only two people can be appointed, but we had a number of great applicants, so thank you.
I second that. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item, H, ordinance, ordinance of the second read, the amendment amend and restate the fair housing ordinance. What do you have on that, Ms. Jackie? Do we need to go through another presentation, or we just need to vote on it?
It's up to you guys. I do have the presentation available, but I'm here to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
Did you make that correction that the Vice Mayor asked for as far as gender?
I did.
What section was that in? I'm sorry.
I don't remember, but I did look, and it was corrected in the definition, but I don't...
That's good enough for me.
Okay. With that being said, do we, do I have a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
We got a second. Any further discussion? Allison, I'm sorry, council. Oh, public discussion? Do we have any public participation on this matter? Seeing no one come forward, Ms. Allison, could you please call the vote?
Of course. Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gobara?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
And Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Jackie.
Thank you, yeah, thank you, Jackie. Okay, we're going to move on to item I, ordinance of the first read. Council?
Yeah, we have ordinance 2025, voluntary annexation of approximately 38.811 acres of property owned by the Flagler Pines Properties LLC.
And this is quasi-judicial?
Correct.
This is, second?
It's annexation, right?
Yeah, it's annexation, but yeah, it's still quasi-judicially correct.
Is quasi-judicial, if you're going to be testifying regarding this matter, if you could stand to be sworn in? The counsel for the applicant is here, right? Allison, could you do the oath? Do we have to do the oath?
It, ma'am, we don't have to do that today. This is more just, you are asking ex parte communication.
Okay, any ex parte communication?
I've had some from residents, but it won't affect my vote.
I have not had any. I don't, no.
Like, I haven't either. I just would like to flag that this is Mr. Jay Gardner's company, correct?
Yes, it is. Okay. I have not spoken to the property president of the, okay, with that being said, yes, sir.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Councilmembers. Father Raker Fang Wing, Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. This is the first reading of the, of an ordinance for Flagler Landings voluntary annexation. The subject property is located south of State Road 100, directly west of the BJ's Plaza. It's approximately about 38 acres. So based on Florida statutes for voluntary annexation, there are two primary criteria. The first one is, it stated that the owner or owners of real property in an unincorporated area of a county which is contiguous to a municipality and reasonably compact may petition the governing body of said municipality that said property be annexed to the municipality. So the finding is that the subject area, as you can see, is contiguous on its property lines to the City of Palm Coast municipal boundaries, and the property is reasonably compact. The second primary criterion is that land shall not be annexed through voluntary annexation when such annexation results in the creation of enclaves. The finding is that the annexation of the property does not create an enclave. There are other requirements by statute relating to notice requirements. The first one is that at least once each week for two consecutive weeks, the findings that we have published notice on February 5th and February 12th of the reading. And the other requirement is that the municipality must provide a copy of the notice via certified mail to the Board of County Commissioners of the county wherein the municipality is located. We have provide that to the Board of County Commissioners on January 6, 2025. As, I'm aware that our residents are concerned about the traffic on State Road 100, so this is not really related to the annexation decision, but I just want to provide you some information relating to that. Currently, only two segments on State Road 100 from I-85 to Seminole Woods is over capacity at our adopted level of service D. The remainder of State Road 100 is within the adopted level of service D. Based on the preliminary proposed development for Flagler Landing, it is projected to exceed current capacity on the directly accessed segment, which is basically the segment between Seminole Woods to Bulldog. This will then result in the development required to mitigate project impacts through proportionate share as provided by statutes. So it depends on the intensity of their development when they come in. They will have to go through that evaluation and analysis in order to do so. So the next step is that the second reading of the ordinance is scheduled for March 4th, and they will follow after that a comprehensive plan, land use map amendment, and rezoning. And then they come back with a technical site plan. That's when you can see exactly what they are proposing to develop. And then thereafter, they would have to come in for a development permit. So staff finds that the petition from Flagler Pines LLC to annex approximately 38.811 acres more or less area meets the criteria established in the Florida statutes, Chapter 171.044, voluntary annexation. The applicant representative, Mr. Jay Livingston, is here, and if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Livingston, you're coming on up. Does anyone on the council have any questions regarding this matter?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted some clarification since this is my first annexation. When we're talking about requiring the development to mitigate the project impacts through proportionate shares provided by statutes, what does that mean? We already know that 100 currently is a trouble area because of other developments, and obviously, I know I ran on trying to bring more commercial to the city so that we can kind of even out our tax base in ways. So I certainly want this to happen, but we also need to consider how that's going to affect the already troubled roadway that we have right there.
Yes. In the history of the city, when I first worked here in 2004, and I recently came back, we never have an issue relating to transportation proportionate share mitigation because our roadways had capacity. And even our recent count in 2023, we had only two segments within the city limits are over capacity, one of which basically have already been addressed because we have a four-lane project in place. The other segment is the one that I just spoke about on 100. So statute allows for projects to move forward if they mitigate for existing roadway deficiencies, basically segments that have been over capacity. So what they, what it would do, statute would allow, is that if a project's trips basically exceed the segment and bring it over the adopted level of service, then the trips that are going over that, they have to mitigate based on the cost that we have to improve it. For example, four-lane of 100. If they exceed the capacity of four-lane and trigger it to go to six-laning, then they have to mitigate for the cost of fixing the six-lane. But they are not required to improve it to six-lane, but they are required to mitigate for their prop share, their portion of, for the city to improve it or for state to improve it to six-lane. So that's what it means.
So, so my understanding is that basically they would pay a proportionate share monetarily, like you said, not, they wouldn't be required to actually extend the road. They would just pay a proportionate share of those trips that would cause it to require three lanes on each side?
That's correct, because based on statute 163.3180 allows basically developments to move forward even though it causes a segment to go over the adopted level of service.
Mr. Livingston, I've given, I've been given, when me and the city manager talked about this a little bit, explain what, what your client is proposing to do on that site.
Jay Livingston here, as the applicant, some agent, Flagler Pines Properties. Good morning, and yeah, it's, it's a, you're going to get a lot more data on this when we get to the next stages, but as far as the, the plan, right now, the property has a commercial frontage in the county zoning and land use and a multifamily rear. This larger southern portion is currently zoned multifamily. The plan is to bring this into the city through the annexation. That's this step that we're here for today and on March 4th. That would then allow you all to adopt the property into your comp plan. So that's the next step, a flu map amendment. And eventually to, to, I think the proposal will be to make the future land use map mixed use and then rezone it to COM2, the entire, entirety of the property, C2, I mean. So it would be going from a hybrid mixed-use, commercial to multifamily to entirely commercial is the plan, with frontage parcels and then a, a big box retail center in the back. So it won't be a wholesale club, but it'll be a similar kind of footprint to what you see next to it. To your question, and to, I think, question that the entire council has, when we come in with the future land use map amendment, you're going to see the, like, worst-case scenario traffic impact analysis that'll show you what maximum intensity, which is not what we're proposing, but maximum intensity would, would result in under your future land use map and your future land use planning. That analysis will include the identification of any failures of capacity under the level of service, and that's where we get into proposed improvements that might need to be mitigated. The prop share then will come in on the third stage, which is site plan, when we actually demonstrate what we're building and what our impacts actually will be. And then we get into the analysis from the future land use stage where you get the highest and best use analysis that identifies those improvements. And then if, if there's any deficiencies in the level of service, then we would, the traffic engineers that are doing the analysis will identify segments. Staff will review those, identify segments that might need to be mitigated, and that's where you get into that mitigation. And then that's handled through some, through some kind of a binding agreement if we get to that stage. But the first step is the annexation, and annexation is mostly driven by the 2007 water settlement because we need water from the city for this property. So annexation is, it's voluntary in the sense of the application is voluntary, but it's essentially a mandatory annexation because of the location of the property. I was doing my best to get the future land use map amendment and the zoning amendments applications ready to first submit before today, but unfortunately, I got hit with whatever cold is going around right now, and I've been in and out of productivity for about the last three weeks. So we're working on that, but when you, the next step, if the annexation is approved, is to submit, we're going to submit them in tandem, even though the zoning can only follow the future land use map being approved. We're going to submit both applications. We're also going to bring in our site plan application early into that process, too. So we're going to go through planning board as a necessary step, and then there'll be two reads of both the future land use map ordinance and the zoning ordinance before you all. And the site plan should be of a level that even, that council has to approve that as well under the tier structure in your administrative code. So there'll be a lot of data that you all will have a chance to look at in terms of the impacts of not only the highest and best use under the future land use map, but also the site plan that will enable us to identify any deficiencies in planning and on the, primarily the 100 corridor there, and any improvements that need to be made. And that's something that needs to happen anyway because the six-laning of 100 has been discussed and planned for my entire career. I mean, even the early aughts when the boom was happening, they were discussing eventually six-laning 100. The DRIs that were approved during that period of time, Town Center, the, the old JX DRI that has been abandoned, all included, either planned portions or contributions towards an eventual six-laning of 100. And now we need to really bring the DOT back into that discussion because right now they're focusing on the resurfacing, but the next significant planning event, I think, in Flagler County for the DOT, for this area of the county, is going to be how to deal with the traffic impacts on 100, since it's clearly becoming and was largely planned as being a primary commercial corridor for this part of the city.
Thank you, sir. Last, Mayor?
Thank you. Did you have any other questions?
Just, just a comment. My concern is that, you know, the fixing of that road becomes a lag behind the development, and so then we're dealing with, you know, a couple of years of, of a road that, for most residents, becomes something that they avoid because of that.
Yeah, to start, I do want to piggyback off of those comments because this goes back to the general concept of what development does and how it doesn't account for the infrastructure and the traffic and all of that that it actually causes. Because essentially, what you've explained and what I understand to be true is that this development, for lack of a better term, trips a requirement to then take mitigation efforts, whereas all of the developments up until this point that haven't caused that level of service on that road to change kind of get off the hook a little bit here. And we don't, because we don't go back to those previous developments and say, hey, they have to now pay a proportionate share. We need all you guys to pay a proportionate share as well. That doesn't happen. So it's, the system is flawed. It's not our fault the system is flawed, but the system is inherently flawed. And unfortunately, you guys kind of get the short end of the stick because you were the last guys to come in. That being said, and I, and I only say that to kind of put that on the council's radar. That is the reality of what we deal with when we approve all of these projects over and over and over. My concern, in addition to the traffic, is, and this is a question for you, Mr. Livingston. Good to see you again, by the way.
See you, too.
Why didn't we do a zoning application change before coming here today in the county? In other words, if your intent, or if the applicant's intent was to come in fully as commercial, why not do a zoning change with the county and then try to come into the city as commercial?
Well, you know, that's been the kind of trend with properties along this corridor. BJ's finished their development and then annexed in. It's, it's really cumbersome. I think we learned through that process, that project, that you end up getting into trying to conform your county zoning, or at least your site plan to the city zoning. So when you annex in, you're not a lawful, non-conforming use. And it, because we had achieved the multifamily zoning in the county, that zoning change was very recent. And a lot of planning efforts went into that, and whether it's the multifamily market not being as strong as, as was believed. But the decision now is we have to annex in, we need to plan this to city code because eventually we're going to be in the city. And I think to your point about, you know, why these decisions weren't made, you all had zero control over the planning of all the other properties around it because they were planned in the county. There is a joint planning agreement, so staff had the opportunity to provide input, but in terms of the approval authority, that was at the county commission. In this case, we are bringing the property in. There is a preliminary plat on file with this county that you can see the frontage, kind of proposed frontage portion, back piece being multifamily. We'd like to just plan this project in the city with your guys' oversight, which will give you maximum control over these questions that before, whether it's prop share or figuring out what the DOT's, you know, position is on future planning for 100. With the exception of your staff being able to provide comments to the county planning staff through the joint planning agreement, you had zero input on it. All you do now is accept these developments when they annex in. In this case, you'll, you'll see it, the future, like you said, you know, this development is going to trip. We don't have a development yet, right? We're going to come in with the future land use map. You're going to see then the maximum development potential in that application. That's going to be the kind of worst-case scenario, kind of scary, max FAR, max intensity, what that would do to the roadway segments. And then that will identify needed improvements, the failure points in all the relevant segments within the study area. And then you'll see the zoning application, which will then pin it down to certain list of uses. And because we have been working on the site plan already... of uses. And because we have been working on the site plan already, you're going to see the site plan, which will then narrow that down to the actual impacts of the development where we can start identifying what needs to be done to not only mitigate the impacts, but potentially time the development appropriately.
Yeah, my concern, and I appreciate that, my concern though is that you're coming in with a portion as multi-family. I have, not only the concern is coming in as multi-family with the already issues that we have, to your point, councilman, with the lack of diversity in our tax base, but there's nothing forcing the applicant, once they come in, to convert to commercial. It's their choice. It's their land. We are choosing to annex them in knowing what their zoning currently is. So I have a concern, and I would have really preferred them to convert to zoning with the county prior to applying to annex in. I understand the dilatory nature of what you're saying. I get that. But that's my concern. And then my other concern is that not only are you coming in as a portion being multi-family, but this is right by the airport. We have an issue right now going on with this overlay ordinance already encompassing a lot of residential units that I have some pretty grave concerns of what those implications look like. And so I'm nervous about bringing in even more residential that, that borders the airport and, and causing potentially even more exposure for the city. How many dwelling units would the, currently does the applicant have a right to in the multi-family?
The multi-family cap was...
And I'm sorry, while you're looking that up, is this per a development order or where, where do they get the cap from?
The den, the density in the comprehensive plan was 255 units for the multi-family.
That's a concern.
Yeah. I mean, that's currently on the books. So if, if we, if we rezoned in the county and then came into the city, we could, under the, the annexation statute theoretically develop under the county code. I mean, this annexation statute says that until you change the future land use map and give the city land use jurisdiction, that the development can proceed. You don't, those rights don't disappear automatically through annexation.
Right.
That's not the plan. The plan is, is to come in with the future land use map amendment. We've already had a TRX meeting on this with staff to get input, to change this to mixed use, because that's the surrounding land use designation, but then a C2 zoning of the entire 38 acres, as opposed to the split zoning that we have current, currently, which would eliminate the possibility of any, any, any multi-family. So the multi, and if we rezoned to commercial in the county before we came in, unless we wanted to develop the property under the county code and then be subject to the city's jurisdiction, we would still have to go back in for a future land use map amendment and a rezoning under the city's code.
I agree with you. I understand that.
So that's, that's the plan.
Yeah, no, I understand you would still have to do that, but we would at least know what we're annexing in. And I, and I say this because right now we're going through a legal dispute where a, a different development, and I'm not, I'm not casting dispersion on you or your applicant in any way, shape, or form, but we're dealing with a very similar scenario where an applicant came in under one thing and then tried to change and increase density and cause some, some density issues in our city, which we're already incurring. We, we see this with the water issues, right? So I'm just, I would prefer, and this is, I guess, a shout out to staff, I would prefer that annexations, whatever the intent is, when you come in the city, do what you can before in the county to make, to give us some assurances as to what's going to happen on that property. Because right now, with all the good intentions, I mean, you know what, your applicant can get a great offer from another developer and, and they could say, you know what, yeah, we, we can sell this and not have to deal with the headache of developing it. And then we have a multi-family building because this purchaser now has different intentions. These are all things that have happened and that can happen. So I'm nervous about this one for a lot of reasons. And I, I would love to see the commercial there, obviously, we need it, but there's nothing that is saying it has to be. So that's my main concern. In addition to the airport issues that, you know, we may, we may have, depending on how much time it takes to even go through the rezoning and flume amendment process. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Gambero. Anything else from you, Councilman Miller?
Yeah, just, just a question for Vice Mayor. So is there, in this process, is there anything to prevent because it's already zoned as multi-family? Is there, if they wanted to do that, if that was their intent, even though they're, they're saying to us that that's not their intent, is there anything to prevent that from happening through the county and then them annexing in?
I think the only thing really, Jay, correct me, I'm sorry, Mr. Livingston. I think the only thing that could happen is maybe if you came to some agreement with the county first. You can't come, you can't make an agreement with the city because you all aren't, that's not binding, correct?
Right.
Yeah. So it would have to be an agreement with the county, which we can't make the county do.
Right.
So I don't know. I'm open to suggestions to something like that.
I'm just saying, do we necessarily have a choice regardless if that's their intent? Or if they sell or?
I think, Mr. Miller, I think that's, that's an excellent question because, again, it's not the plan, but if, if we did get a great offer from somebody, whether we were in the county or the city, then that would be, that's the current zoning. We, we, as long as we don't go beyond 255 units in the multi-family, that would be permitted, whether we're in the county or we annex into the city prior to future land use map amendment. You know, we have between now and May, and March 4th for the second reading. I don't know if we'll have the applications submitted for future land use map because we need to get the traffic impact analysis done, and that needs to be, meet, meet the city methodology standards and, and, you know, it's a fairly detailed application. We want to make sure we get you all the data that you all deserve to review. But I'm about 60% through the actual application, other than the technical stuff that I can't prepare. We can prepare some more data there. You know, in the past, we've done what we call pre-annexation agreements. So there's some commitments between both sides. In this case, after meeting with staff several times, we decided not to do that because the plan was always to go straight to commercial. And you all can't commit to any specific zoning that we asked for in that. We can say, we intend to apply for, or the city will initiate a rezoning application, but beyond that, nobody can make any commitments because that would be contract zoning. So because of the extra step that entails and because there wasn't any additional planning needs for this particular project, the water and sewer issues are resolved, they're known. We decided to just go straight to petition, to get this before you all, to get you the land use jurisdiction authority. You know, obviously your discretion is limited for site plans, but you would, I believe, yeah, 255 unit multi-family would be approved by city council as a tier three or tier one.
Tier three.
Tier three, right. I always flip that in my head. So again, we're not planning that, but you know, if, if we don't annex in, then that decision, those decisions are made at the county level with no input from the city. If we do annex in, then regardless of how we proceed, you all would have that oversight. Now, I can't, I can, I can, without a doubt, give you my word that our plan is to go to commercial, but as far as what that commitment means legally, that's just my word. But that is the plan. And I, I mean, I have a very extensive file putting together applications for both a mixed use change on the flume and a C2 rezoning application that will be submitted as soon as they're ready. And that will, you know, demonstrate our commitment. But we need to have the annexations complete until you all have jurisdiction to consider those applications.
Let me ask you this. If we table the first read to March 4th, to give you a little more time to finish those documents, because we do have a wide amount of discretion with regards to annexation. If we were to give, to table it, wait until March 4th, that doesn't, I don't, because I don't want to say, I'll be honest, I don't want to say no to you and your applicant, but at this point, I'm a no. So I would rather table it, give you some time to get in the documents, let us see the commitment from the developers, see the plans, all of those things, and then do a second read, what, two weeks after would be the next business meeting?
Yes, March 4th.
So it would delay it by two weeks. I think that that would be better than a no. And I see Mr. Tyner chomping at the bit.
Ray Tyner, Deputy Director, Community Development. I'm just kind of thinking this through. And, you know, this takes two readings, but something, I mean, they would have to agree upon that may provide a little bit more reasonable assurances is that maybe if we, you know, approved the annexation at first read, we still got to come back for a second read. Before we approve the entire annexation, we can have them submit for the zoning application, future land use map amendment, go through that process, go through planning board on contingency that it's annexed, come to city council for the first read for the future land use map amendment and the zoning. Okay? And then during the second read, you'd have the annexation to adopt, approval, and then the second read for the flume amendment adoption, and then the zoning adoption. So they all come at the same time. That'll give us a little bit more reasonable assurances. They come at the same time, so you have the ability to see what the future land use map amendment proposed changes in the zoning.
So if I'm understanding Ray correctly, let me try and summarize, is that instead of the second, if you adopt today, instead of the second read for annexation being on March 4th, we would wait until we receive the applications, they've come through planning board, and you would adopt the second read simultaneously as the flume amendment and the rezoning. So it would not be on March 4th, it would be until they can go through the other process for those other applications.
We would not adopt the annexation. You would do the first read of the, the flume amendment and the zoning, first read, and then at adoption for that, we put them all together. So at adoption hearing, you're going to, everything's going to be approved at the adoption.
So what, Mr. Tyner, it's pretty much annexation, number one, at the adoption hearing, and then the flume and the zoning. Correct. So you, ideally, in a perfect world, if everyone agrees to this, you do your, your first read today, which is passing the first read, not adopting anything, and then you go through the process. Mr. Livingston and his team would have to agree that they would need to get everything applied and go through planning board and then bring it to second read. And it'd be like one, two, three, all different hearings. You would have to approve the first to get to two, approve the second to get to three.
And then final approval.
Yes, for final approval.
What is the difference between that and tabling this first read to March 4th?
Well, I mean, I think from my, my perspective, it gives my client the assurances that the annexation is something that the city wants in order to, because there's a lot of work that goes into those second, those secondary applications. And if the city wants to annex the property by approving the first reading of the annexation, it's not effective until you adopt it on second reading. And I think unless, I'm, I'm just skimming through the statute really quick, I think as long as the second read is properly noticed, we don't have any issues as far as legal notice requirements.
Correct. It's just regular notice requirements.
Right. So we just need to, you know, instead of, the notice for the second reading would be today's announcement of the second reading, but we would just have to renotice the second reading when, when.
Probably would have to publish it still in the newspaper.
Right, right. So that would give my client assurances, then we would give you everything you want, and you're essentially approving the annexation, the future land use map, and the zoning. At that stage, you're probably going to have, it may not be, I mean, I'll talk about this with staff in terms of timing, but you would most likely have the final site plan to look at, whether that's going to come back to you for final approval, once this is all completed or happened all at the same time. That's a logistical question we'll have to, we'll have to discuss, but it'll be ready. I mean, I already have conceptual site plans that, that we can, that we're working on, that are going to be part of the zoning and future land use map. We'll finalize those once we know we have the zoning that we're.
Mr. Mayor, I, I move approval of the ordinance with the following contingency that have been laid out.
I don't think you can, you can't base a contingency. That's the problem. You can't, you can't vote for an annexation because I, I agree with you, I would do the same thing, but you can't make it contingent on that.
Yeah, no, Ms. Ponteir is correct. So what, what, if the council wanted to go forward is that, hey, you would move to pass this first read, but hopefully they can all get their ducks in a row by the second read.
Okay. So I move approval of the ordinance and Mr. Livingston, you just have to get all that stuff done before we even get to the last stage.
And then just so I'm clear, so the second reading would then be scheduled once those applications have been, because those applications go in, they get reviewed by planning board, and then they'd be scheduled for city council, and that would be when the second read would be scheduled. Is that correct?
You're looking at at least six.
Right.
Yeah, you're looking at at least six weeks.
Councilman Gambero, can we hold up for a second, please? Mr. Livingston, is it the intent of, of your client to make access across that whole frontage over to BJ's to relieve some of the traffic on, on State Road 100?
Yes, sir. That's a really good question. We already have a, there's already a covenant, restrictive covenant that was put in place because Mr., the Flagler Pines Property and Flag Airport Industrial, which is, is the property that's, the entities that are owned by Mr. Gardner, they, they entered into an agreement to provide for using the, the existing BJ's entrance as one of the entrances. The site plan also calls for a, a frontage road behind the frontage parcels that's going to provide access.
Yes.
Whether or not we can then even pop access off into the Airport Commons Phase 2 properties next door, that is a different question. Originally, the Airport Commons developer wasn't too keen on the multi-family properties having a secondary access to there, but if it's all commercial, then I think it benefits all the developments to have that commercial traffic, have, being able to circulate. If we can solve the racetrack pop-off problem, then, you know, that would be really good. But as far as what we control, we do plan on having there being a frontage road cross access across all the properties.
Okay. So that's, that's one of my main concerns in, in making it all commercial because we, we definitely don't need single family, well, I'm sorry, multi-family housing backed up against an airport like that. That's going to continue to be an issue. I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman, if you want to go ahead and put forward that motion. Any other?
I'm good.
Okay. Anyone second?
I'll second it.
He's seconding. Discussion. You got anything else, Vice Mayor? Yeah, with, Mr. Livingston, we are, we are, we are very leery of this council at least, very leery, leery of approving any more housing in the, in the situation we are currently in.
Yeah, I understand.
And from what the city manager, the way she laid it out for me, that would go a long way as far as, you know, helping diversify our tax base and relieve some of the traffic on State Road 100. And I'm all for that. But, you know, as far as backing houses up against there, we need to get through all this, and, and I hope you present reasonable accommodations to, to make this happen the way that it's proposed to us. Okay?
Yeah. And I think as proposed, you would, you would be, you wouldn't be approving the annexation, although that would be the first approval in the tier of approvals, without seeing the commercial C2 zoning on the entirety of the property.
Yes.
Which is what the application that we're working on. So that would, this, an approval today would give my client assurances that the annexation will be moving forward. Obviously, you can't condition it on there, but we're not changing our plan. Our plan is to submit those applications. So you would then be able to see, review, ask questions, even if the annexation is really limited to, are we creating an enclave and is it contiguous to the city, which are the only two relative criteria to that application. You would be able to ask questions about details in the subsequent applications to have the assurances that you feel that this is good for the city, because ultimately an annexation is, is this good or bad for the city? And your concern is multi-family would not be good for the city, and that's not our plan. And I think as laid out, this would allow you all to have that assurance before approving the final annexation.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
We have a, a motion, a second. Allison, could you, I'm sorry, public participation. Does anyone have anything to, to discuss about this project? Yes, Ms. Shelley. Paulette couldn't beat you to it.
I wish I had the ample time to express to you all of the multiple reasons why this is sketchy at best. I remember trying to fight the last annexation on Old Kings Road, and Mr. Brankino sitting right there and being mad as a hatter because the annexation didn't discuss in any way, shape, or form, the intent and purpose of what the end game was. And in the next meeting, he was shocked that the annexation actually ushered in four-story apartment complexes right next to the Tuscana luxury homes on historic Old Kings Road. So the, the bottom line here is what are they trying to do? And as I read it, I believe it's commercial property right now, commercial property that we desperately need quality retail. I work out at Planet Fitness, I get pedicures at the mall next to it. Whoever approved that project, it is so lacking in parking, it is dangerous. There's many days where I have to drive through, you know, and find a different way to get exercise because I can't find a parking place. Common sense tells you that that property should be a continuation of that strip mall. The problem is, it's owned by this LLC, which we know is Mr. Gardner, and Mr. Gardner is on record as saying he's only going to sell it to the airport. It gets complicated because the airport is now waiting for $5 million to finish their plans that have been in the works for years for a massive terminal building. When you think airport terminal, you think ticketed passengers, you think of a reason for having a terminal. We used to have an airport advisory committee that was disbanded because of the pilots, the local pilots who have valid reasons to speak their mind on their airport, didn't want such a large terminal. They, they said there was no need. They, they said there was no need. There's $5 million on the line right now. It's a time crunch, because they're under the gun to get this overlay passed. The problem with the airport terminal plans were, they included this piece of property when they submitted it to get these million dollars in grants, and, and they don't own it. So this is the first step in allowing a $10 million terminal to an airport that, in my opinion, is rogue and run by a megalomaniac that doesn't care about the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens of Palm Coast or Palm, or Flagler County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Paulette?
Paulette Hatfield in the F-section. I have to ask one simple question, and that is, what would be the benefit to our residents of Palm Coast if this was annexed? 255 condos or multifamily apartments? We're already lacking in water availability. Our water pressure is already limited in the F-section at least, and that is, I believe, the water treatment one. So my question is, if we're going to annex another 255 multifamily apartments or condos, and we have over 2,000 homes for rent or for sale, what good is that to our residents? What benefit do we receive? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Paulette, their intent is to make it completely commercial, no residential housing. Any further comments from the public? I'll bring it back to the dice. Ms. Allison, could you call to vote, please?
Of course. Vice Mayor Pontiary?
No.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
And Mayor Norris?
Yes.
Motion passes three to one.
Okay. With that being said, we will move on to item J presentation. Well, pause that for a second. If, could we take a 10-minute break? Anybody up for a 10-minute break?
Sure.
Consent? Okay. We're, we're going to adjourn for 10 minutes.